Onto public hearings. So we have item 6.1, City of Emeryville Public Park and Pain Rehabilitation Consultants' Management Group Parking Lot, Charlie.
Okay, Mayor Asher and members of the city council. You have before you tonight a proposal for a general plan amendment and rezoning regarding the Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants, or PRC as it's known, parking lot at the northwest corner of Stanford Avenue and Doyle Street. By way of background, in November 2008, the city council approved 168-unit project called Parkside Residential Project, formerly known as Paper Mill, which encompasses most of that block bounded by Stanford, Doyle, Powell, and Hollis. The project included construction of a public park and a replacement parking lot for 41 privately-owned parking spaces owned by the owners of the building at 1335 Stanford Avenue, which is across the street to the south of this block. In August of 2010, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for that property at 1335 Stanford Avenue for use as the Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants' office. The PRC use permit was conditioned on the property owner agreeing to a land swap with the city in order to create the public park to be constructed by the Parkside Residential Project. In February of 2010, the council approved a design for the parking lot, park and parking lot, upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So this is a drawing that shows the configuration of the parcels on that block in the before condition, before the Parkside Residential Project was built or approved. There were two existing buildings here, and then this was the city parking lot in blue. And these are privately-owned parcels in the middle of the city parking lot that contained 41 parking spaces that were owned by the property across the street. So the city property is kind of a donut, or a double donut, with these two private parcels in the middle of it. After a lengthy process, looking at lots of different alternatives, which I, by the way, have in another PowerPoint presentation if you really want to go through all that again, but I can show you what all those alternatives are, if you don't remember, or if you want a refresher. But anyway, this is what we finally ended up with, which is this private parking lot on the east end of the block, and then the rest of the block would be the park. And then what this looks like in the final design of the project is this. This is just a more refined version of that same scheme. Of course, this park over here is going to be modified a little bit to account for the council's decision to retain the existing trees in this area, but generally speaking, this is what it looks like. So this would be the new parking lot parcel. This is the proposed parcel map. It has not yet been approved or recorded, but this is what it is going to end up looking like. So this is the new parking lot parcel for PRC. This is the city park parcel. The two privately-owned parcels that are there currently, one is about here, the other one is about here. So PRC will retain ownership of this one at the east end, and they'll get some additional land around it. And then the city will obtain the one, the PRC parcel, at this end. And the city will still have two strips of land on either side of the parking lot parcel that will be part of the park. So continuing on with the background, when the general plan was adopted in October 2009, all of the parking lot parcels had these designations: land use diagram, mixed use with residential. The maximum FAR was 1.2 to 1.6. The maximum building height was 30 to 55, and there was no residential density designation on the parking, on the city parking lot or the private parking lot parcels. In 2010, when PRC bought their property, the general plan land use map was being used as the interim zoning map under our interim zoning regulations. Therefore, at that time, the zoning of these parcels was MUR, mixed use with residential. When the new planning regulations were adopted in February of 2013, the zoning map re-designated these parcels as Park Open Space, PO. As part of the negotiations for the land swap that they agreed to, PRC has requested that the proposed parking lot parcel be rezoned back to MUR, which was what the zoning was when they bought their property and when they agreed to the condition to exchange property with the city. So the proposal that is before you is to, first, to amend the general plan, to do four things: one, to add a maximum residential density of 20 to 35 units per acre to the proposed PRC parking lot parcel; to redesignate the city-owned park parcel from mixed use with residential to park open space; and remove the other park opportunity circle on the land use diagram, because that is now superfluous. I'll show that to you on a map in a second; change the maximum heights to 30 feet no bonus for both the city property and the PRC parking lot; and change the maximum floor area ratio designation to 0.5 no bonus for both properties. And also a rezoning to rezone the proposed PRC parking lot parcel from PO, Park Open Space, to MUR, mixed use with residential. So here are a number of maps that show what all that means. The property in question is right here, kind of in the middle of the city. This green circle is the green, is the other park opportunity indication, as shown here in the key. And as you can see, the park now will be this green area here, so there's no need to have both a green designated park and the green park opportunity circle on the map. So we would take off the green circle. Zooming in on this, so you can see it a little bit better. The current designation of this site, of the entire block, is MUR, as it shows here, and these are the two little PRC parcels. We haven't shown the green circle on this map, just for clarity, but it would be on here on the existing map. The proposed general plan land use designation would be MUR for the parking lot parcel and Park Open Space for the city parcel around it. This is the residential density map, and the area in question, again, is right here. This is the PRC parking lot, right there. Zooming in on that, currently, there is no residential density designation at all. This would put the residential density designation on the PRC parcel. And not because they intend to build any residential, but only because there's always a residential density with the MUR land use designation, because it's mixed use with residential. That's what the land use designation is called, so if you don't have a density with it, it kind of doesn't make sense. This is the height map. Again, we're looking at this area right here. So in the current situation, the height is, whatever that is, 30 to 55, I believe. And then the proposal would be to drop it to the lowest designation, which is 30 feet with no bonus, and that would be the same as what we have in the residential neighborhood across Doyle Street. I forgot to mention that when we're looking at the residential density, it's also the same as the residential density in the neighborhood across Doyle Street. Then looking at the FAR, the floor area ratio map, and by the way, you should have on your dais a corrected map. We put the wrong map, I apologize for that, in the staff report. It really doesn't have anything to do with this property. It was the Doyle-Hollis North area where we had previously changed the FAR, but we put the older map in the staff report, so we thought we should use the current map. Anyway, the current designation is this, 1.2 to 1.6, and the proposal would be to redesignate both parcels to the lowest possible designation, which is 0.5 with no bonus, and that's the same as, again, the property across Doyle Street in the residential neighborhood. So the proposal would be for the general plan to drop the floor area ratio, the residential density, and the height limit to the lowest possible categories. Then for the zoning, we're looking at this area right here, again, and the current zoning of this area, of the rest of the block where the Parkside apartment is, is MUR, mixed use with residential. But for the parking lot and the Parksite, it is open space, and the request is to rezone just the PRC parcel to MUR. And by rezoning this this way and changing the general plan land use map, as I described, that would make the general plan land use map and the zoning map match each other. This was considered by the Planning Commission on May 22, but as you know, we had a notification problem, and therefore, it had to be reconsidered by the commission at their meeting last week on June 26. This time, we did notify everybody by mail within a 500-foot radius, and we included in that mailing the notices for both the Planning Commission meeting on June 26 and this meeting tonight. The commission's vote was three ayes, which were Commissioners Keller, Moss, and Cardoza, and two noes, Commissioners Donaldson and Cumberly. There was one recusal, Commissioner Gunkel, who lives, who owns property within 500 feet of the site, and one absence, Commissioner Tan. This vote of three to two was sufficient to recommend approval of the rezoning, which requires a majority of those present in voting. However, because of something in state law, a general plan amendment has to be approved by a majority of the total membership of the body. So in other words, that requires four out of seven commissioners to approve it, and there were only three at the June 26 meeting. So therefore, the three to two vote was not sufficient to recommend approval of the general plan amendment to the city council, even though it was an affirmative vote, more or less. It should be noted, however, that when the item was first heard by the commission on May 22, the vote was four to two, which was sufficient to approve both the general plan amendment and the rezoning. But Commissioner Tan was absent on June 26. She did vote aye on May 22. So just to summarize the findings here, to approve a general plan amendment, the city council must make findings outlining its consistency with the general plan guiding principles, its internal consistency with other provisions of the general plan, and consistency with any other adopted plans, and those findings are in the resolutions, resolution that's before you. When the general plan was being developed, the Parkside project, including the public park, had not yet been approved, so the general plan land use designation for the entire block was MUR, but the potential new park somewhere on that block was indicated with the green circle. By the time the planning regulations had been adopted in 2013, the park and parking lot had been designed, so the new zoning map indicated specifically with those properties as Park Open Space. That's why the general plan and the land use and the zoning map don't appear to match each other, but they are not inconsistent, because the green circle does the same thing in a more general way that the Park Open Space zoning does. So the request to rezone the parking lot provides an opportunity now to bring consistency, or I should say, more consistency between the general plan land use diagram and the zoning map by designating the PRC parking lot parcel as MUR and the park parcel as Park Open Space. Concerning the rezoning, the city council must make four findings: that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan, that it's necessary for public health, safety, and general welfare, or will be of benefit to the public, that it's consistent in compliance with SEQA, and that it's, the property suitable for use is permitted in the proposed zone. The proposed amendment to rezone the parking lot from PO to MUR is consistent with the general plan. The parking lot meets the parking requirements of the PRC office across the street, and it's therefore a more appropriate designation, is MUR. So our recommendation is that the council introduce the rezoning ordinance after a motion to read by title only, that you then take public testimony regarding both the general plan amendment and the rezoning ordinance, and that the council then approve the general plan amendment resolution and adopt the first reading of the rezoning ordinance, which will then come back to you for a second reading at your next meeting on July 15. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. On what basis were the no votes?
I think there was a concern that something could be built on the property and that it should remain as open space. I should point out that the property is quite small, that it also has, I didn't mention this when I was showing you, but in the parcel map, there's a 20-foot wide easement that will go through the property for a rather large water main that runs under the site, and you can't build anything on top of that. So you'd be left with about half of that parking lot parcel that could actually potentially be developed, and with the lowest possible height limit and FAR and residential density, you're really left with an essentially undevelopable parcel. You could build something on it, but it would be very small. A couple of council members, I mean, planning commissioners were not satisfied with that. They didn't want any development potential at all, basically, on the parking lot. I should also note, though, that this is one of the deal points with the doctors for the land swap, and if they don't agree to the land swap, then we won't get our park. So that was the basis of the no votes.
So I have another related question. The zoning passed, the commission, so the rezoning.
Correct.
But not the general plan amendment. So there was enough people who thought that the way, the details for this land swap were basically acceptable.
Two, three of the five commissioners who voted, yes.
To three, right.
Yes. It's really a technicality of state law that the general plan amendment didn't pass.
What would be the other options for zoning on that parking lot?
Well, there are a lot of different zoning districts, but I don't know that any of them would necessarily put any greater restrictions in terms of what could be built. The parking lot is accessory to the building across the street, so that's.
The medical offices need the parking lot, so I don't know why they want to even entertain residential.
Doesn't need a park, oh, does need a parking lot.
Yeah, they need, yeah, they need, they need parking for their patients.
Absolutely. No, it's just, well, perhaps I should defer to them to answer this, but it's just a question of having the zoning be what it was when they purchased their property, because it was rezoned since they purchased their property, and they want it put back to what it was when they purchased their property.
I see.
That's why they wanted MUR.
But that was an interim zoning map, right? So they purchased when it was an interim zoning map.
Right, yes, but it was the zoning at the time. Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of the fact that it's relatively unclear about the ordinance and whether or not the Planning Commission, we have a positive recommendation. I think that's very unclear, but that, the Planning Commission is just advisory.
Correct.
The council, even if it doesn't receive a clear message from the Planning Commission, has the ability to make the decision on the issue.
Absolutely.
I move to read by title only.
Let's second.
Excuse me, there's a public hearing. We have to hear from the public, it's a public hearing.
You can still move by title only.
Read by title only first, and then we have a public.
You can do it either way. If you want to take public comment first, that's fine.
Let's take public comment, please. Anyone to be heard on this item?
This is an issue I haven't, I'm not really up to speed with, although a little bit, and I've listened here tonight and listened another night. First of all, I would like to say the standard complaint that I have to the planning department, and that is, I think, I think we're, the planning department, and I'm speaking now to the city manager and also to the planning director, I don't know why it has to be, or I don't think it has to be, that the staff recommends that you take public testimony and then approve a project. Because if you parse that, what you're saying is, listen to what the public says, but don't really listen to them, and instead, if there's negative comments from the, from the public, don't listen to it, and just go ahead and approve the project. I don't think legally we have to do that, and it may be a sort of accurate way behind the scenes, the way it works here, that the, that the staff and that the council doesn't really listen to the public testimony, and so that way it may be honest, but it's, it causes a lot of cynicism, and, you know, I don't, I don't think we should do that. We don't legally have to do that. I don't think that this city should, should, the staff for this city should recommend that the council take public testimony about a public hearing and then recommend to approve without hearing the public testimony. I just, it really rubs me the wrong way, I think it's creepy. So I would like the city manager to weigh in on this. Do we legally have to do this? Does the staff have to recommend you take public testimony and then approve? Why can't they just say something like, "We recommend you take public, this council take public testimony and then decide what they want to do?" So that's my request to the city manager. For all these public hearings, because this is the way it always goes, it always, it's always the same thing. It's always take public, the, Mr. Bryant, the planning director, recommends to take public testimony and then approve the project. I think, I'd like to thank Ms. Atkins for, Councilmember Atkins, for asking Mr. Bryant, the city, the planning director, to tell us what the two, the two planning commissioners that said no to this project, what the content of what they were asked, why they said no. And so I thank you for asking that, him that, and I'm just sort of wondering, why wouldn't the planning director volunteer this? Why did this have to be prompted by Mayor, I mean, Vice Mayor Atkins? I'm just, I just think that the, I mean, it's a weighty subject, and I just think that this.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryant should have just volunteered this information. Thank you.
Hello. I just have to make a couple of comments here. You know, we had the approval of this project, we came up with the idea of having a park, we made it, we made a deal with them for a land swap, the parking lot and the park. So we all thought the deal was carried out, and then we adapted the general plan, and they discovered that that portion of the deal that they made was now zoned open space instead of being zoned as residential. So all that means is that the value of their land is substantially diminished, or zero if it's open space, but it has some value if it does have some zoning and some approval to do something. So all these doctors are trying to do is to retain the value of the deal that they made. So if you don't allow this to go forward, we don't have our park. I don't know if they could legally force this decision, because it was made years ago. So this is a non-issue. And to go into all the details about how something can be built here when it's not feasible, I mean, we're wasting a lot of time. I think we should just approve this and be done with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? You had a motion, didn't you, or?
There's a motion on the floor.
And I would second that.
Okay. Give me a second.
Just to read by title only, the ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay. Get the right ordinance in front of me. Apologies. An ordinance of the city council of City of Emeryville amending planning, the planning regulations by modifying the zoning map in figure 9-3.103 subsection A of chapter three of title nine of the Emeryville Municipal Code to rezone the proposed Pain and Rehabilitation Consultants' Management Group Parking Lot Parcel at the northwest corner of Stanford Avenue and Doyle Street from PO, Park Open Space, to MUR, mixed use with residential.
Let's take a roll call vote, please.
So that was just to read by title only, and so we've done that.
I have a question for either Charlie or Michael, and this is, when we made that exchange of the land, you know, between the parking lot and getting the park, the language says the land swap requires, requires the designation. What is the power of that? Can we, if we alter that, does everything fall to pieces?
I would defer to the city attorney to respond to that.
The land swap, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
The exchange of land, down when we made the agreement with PRC to exchange that land, when they got their approvals, they were required to do this.
Correct, correct.
So if we, if we deny this, what happens to that deal and what happens to the, to the park?
Well, they were, in their use permit, they were required to cooperate with the city on the land swap. I mean, we couldn't compel them to finalize it, but they were required to cooperate with us, which they have done.
And Charlie, from, from your staff report, it appears to me that these actions will bring into congruence the general plan and the zoning.
Correct.
Which are out of conjunction right now.
Well, that's debatable, but the maps don't look identical, put it that way.
Okay. I have a question. And we keep talking about the value of the land, is, when we talk about park open space, that still permits a parking lot, doesn't it?
I believe it would allow it as an accessory use.
Okay, and so that's still got a value to it, right? It's.
The staff, just to clarify, the staff has not been talking about the value of the land. That was a public comment.
Right, okay.
Is someone from PRC here who wants to speak to it?
Yes, yes, they are here.
Come forward, please.
I have another question on the ordinance.
Yeah.
On page two of the ordinance. It says, whereas the Planning Commission held a duly and properly noted public hearing on June 26 and voted to recommend that the city council approve, that's, I don't believe that's a correct statement.
Yeah.
On the rezoning, it is.
Say again, Michael.
I'll let Charlie, but.
That's a correct statement on the rezoning. It's not entirely accurate on the general plan amendment. I would just note that based on what happened at the May 22 meeting, we anticipated the vote would be the same on June 26. We didn't know that one of the commissioners would be absent, and that staff report was written and distributed to you before the Planning Commission took their action. So that's why it's.
Well, I would like to see the ordinance changed, revised, and reflect the actuality of what happened, because this is a misrepresentation.
Certainly, we can do that.
How would you change that, Charlie or Michael?
No, I would not change the ordinance, because it's a correct statement.
Oh, that's right, that's right. This is the rezoning.
The rezoning, they did.
The ordinance is only on the rezoning.
Oh, okay, okay.
Different standard for the zoning.
So it's in the resolution.
It would be the, to the extent there's a comparable statement in the resolution for the general plan.
There is, in the resolution.
That one, we would need to correct.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Ruth, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the PRC folks about your need for parking and if you just want to speak to what your patients need to be able to access your facility.
Yeah, I'm Mayor Asher, members of council, I'm Raymond Buddy, I'm attorney for the Pain and Rehabilitation Clinic. There's 42, I believe, parking spaces that are there now and will be there afterwards for our, for our patients, and for access, there is going to have to be some improvement on the path of travel coming from the new parking lot location over to the doors of the clinic. So that will happen. Right now, the parking is at the other side of the street, this side of the block. Parking lot's moving to the other, other location, and so we're going to have to improve the path of travel. That's part of the plan.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move approval of the first reading.
And I would second that.
Ken, I would prefer that you take up the issue of the general plan, since there's a, you know, your zoning is an issue to be, needs to be consistent with your general plan, so you ought to take your first action on your general plan resolution.
So 6.11.
You want a motion on the resolution first, before the first reading, before the ordinance?
Correct. Right, that's the order that they're listed in in the recommendation from staff.
All right, I move the resolution.
I'll second it again.
And I would just note that from your prior comment, you would like us to amend the third-to-last whereas to make it clear that, you know, the vote was three to two to recommend approval, but that was insufficient under state and local law to, to carry the recommendation to the council. So we'll make that type of edit to the resolution.
Very good.
And let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brickman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No. Okay, 6.12, we've read by title only.
We did that already.
I move the ordinance.
We did that already. We've already done that, so now we need a motion on the first reading.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on that.
Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Did you get a, did you get a motion? I'm sorry, I need a motion in a second.
We already have that.
You have a motion.
Davis and Brickman. Davis and Brickman.
Brickman?
Brickman.
My apologies.
Councilmember Brickman?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Asher?
No. Okay, on to...